Ready? Okay, I'll follow me. We'll have Mr. Amos Wilson, Pastor Amos Wilson, give us the invitation and please.
Father God, in your precious name and Jesus' become, thank you for your love and kindness from over to attend mercy. We thank you for allowing us to come together once again to have the town business going discussed. You know, we thank you, Lord, for each and everyone that's here under the sound of our voice. We actually give us wisdom now to understand how to, how to directly carry out the order of the town. And Father, we actually look on us tonight and bless us, we pray, but we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Let's lead you to the light of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have minutes in the February eighth meeting. The council, a pleasure.
Have a motion, I approve the minutes.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Justice Wilson, I favor eye.
Eye.
Pose nay. Next up, we have public comments. Anybody can come forward for three minutes to speak on anything they would like. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My, Mr. Amos, are you doing the best I can? And, uh, my name is Joe Solano, and I serve the North Carolina Department of Public Safety as superintendent at High Correction Institution. First of all, behalf of the staff of High Correction Institution, I'd like to express my sincere condolences for the loss of your friend and colleague, Dr. Charles Boyett. Secondly, I would like to thank you for allowing me to make the following announcement. On April second, two thousand sixteen, High Correction Institution will be hosting a career fair. I'd say job fair, but it's more than just a job. The job, we have thirty-six positions for correction officer one. It's a new increased salary starting in January to thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars a year, plus a very generous benefits package. Those thirty-six positions tally up to one million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars and eight hundred, or one million, one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars a year, um, that along with Belle Haven surrounding communities, um, could make, that kind of number could make an impact to those salaries. We're losing that money in the surrounding communities by not having those positions still. So I'm just asking your support and courage that we have, uh, there is additional information that can be obtained with the clerk at the county municipal building, or feel free, anybody in the community, you could call me directly, I'm Joe Solano, call me at nine two six, uh, eighteen ten. That's it. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Captain Solano. Mr. Solano, we want you to also know that the town will support you in any way we can, and whenever we need something like that, we want to be a friend of the prison in every way we can, and Fire Prince Hospital is part of that. We know you need that hospital.
Well, I have two hundred staff there, they're all on board with that, and, uh, I reminded them where I was going at the amenants meeting, and, uh, I got their validation that they're all behind my account.
Great.
You got us too.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else that can come forward for three minutes to do anything they'd like.
I'm usually a small business owner here in town, and I'm gonna try to get through this the best that I can. You know, a year ago, we gave a celebration of fifty years of Dr. Boyett's service to this town, and I think it was quite an honor. I'm so glad we were able to do that, and one of the things that we did was we nominated him to be the recipient of the Order of the Lonely Pine. I ordered the lapel pin just about ten days ago. Came away for his birthday. His birthday was Sunday, it was a week ago, and I knew I wouldn't see him, so I had planned to get that to him the night of his meeting. And so, given to family, and you'll probably know it's a small lapel pin for his lapel, he's give you the body, but I did not want the meeting to go by without letting all of you know that he was recipient of the Order of the Lonely Pine, and we're gonna be covered in it. And I think I think I'll feel very great when I'm gonna be part of that, and I'll be the help. Thank you.
I will talk, talk about Dr. Boyett in length in just a little bit. Any other comments? If not, I'll call public comments to close. Next up, we have appointment with the council. As everyone knows, unbelievably, Dr. Boyett passed away this past week. It was a shock to all of us, heartbreak to most of us, and we lost a great advocate for Belle Haven. I can tell you from traveling around the state, when, particularly when we went to the building, that's what they call a legislative building, right? When we went to the building, you would be shocked at how many of the legislators would know Dr. Boyett, or if they saw me and knew I was from Belle Haven, they would ask me how Dr. Boyett did. I didn't know this, but for years, he used to serve as Doctor of the Day at a program at the legislative building, and he would go up once a year and spend the day as the Doctor of the Day. And doing it so many years, he got to me where he was pretty well-known, and he was thought a lot of, and he has helped us in a lot of ways. For example, a certificate of need fight, having his name and having his influence to help with that was important. When you have a thirty-year mayor, he tends to have a little bit of credibility when you 're talking to other public officials, especially a small-town mayor, which is so difficult to be. So, it was, it was just quite a blow for the council here. The other thing about Dr. Boyett is he was one-hundred percent true to the hospital. The reason for that was not for his personal gain. He was not gonna make a dime from the hospital being reviewed. He knew that his patients were dying. He knew about Portia Gibbs passing away. He knew about other people. He knew about people bleeding to death without blood that he knew would've made it. He knew about a lot of these things. He knew about the people across creek that needed that hospital and this pressure it's putting on them. He knew a lot that a lot of us don't know. Some people poke fun at some of the things he said, but he was talking from eighty-one years of wisdom and fifty years as a physician. So Belle Haven has sustained a great loss. The funeral will be this, coming Saturday at two o'clock at the Wilkens Center. The visitation is five to eight o'clock at the Wilkens Center, and I am certain that it'll be overflow, overflow crowd Saturday. I still ask people to please come out, and if you're not able to get into the building, there will be speakers outside, I understand, and secondly, we're asking that folks line the sidewalk from the Wilkens Center down to PCA, the Communitarian Cemetery, for the funeral procession to see, let his family know how important he was, and his family, they do know how important he was, but he became to be a friend of mine. And at this time in Belle Haven, uh, to lose Dr. Boyett on this board is difficult, because as we know, uh, this board has been three to two for the hospital. We've got two people on the board that have told everybody in town they support hospital, but every time we have a hospital vote, they vote the other way. So your vote says what you support. I hope tonight with the resolution that we have prepared, that we can all get on the same accord after some, some more information. But we need a council member that's strong, somebody who's proven, somebody who can speak up for the people and not worry about hurting somebody's feelings, somebody who's strong, somebody that can't be intimidated, and there's no one in town that's any more powerful in those regards than Steve Carroll. So I would like for the appointment of council, I would like to suggest Steve Carroll to fill the vacated spot of Dr. Charles Boyett. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion, let me do that.
Have a second?
Second.
I favor eye.
Eye.
Pose nay. All right. But do you feel swearing, Mr. Steve Carroll?
Right hand, I guess I place...
Place camera.
Place camera, right hand, hand up.
Right hand up, left hand up.
Just repeat after me. I, Steve Carroll...
I, Steve Carroll.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear...
Do solemnly and sincerely swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina...
That I will be, that's too many words.
Faithful.
I'll be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
Bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities...
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established...
Which are or may be established...
For the government thereof...
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support...
And I will endeavor to support...
Maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Excuse me, the Constitution of the said state.
Of the said state.
Not in constitution, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not in...
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability...
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Think I have a question. All right, next up, we have spring cleanup. Airspit, show full.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to again, uh, this year with spring cleanup, the trash in the town of Belle Haven. Uh, we've done this for, I think, the past six or seven years, for one Friday in April that is intended for planned for April twenty-ninth. I will confirm with G by the end of this week, which was a specific date. Again, we're going to go the same way that we've done it the past few years at the same cost to the town.
Uh, is that, does that date make sense to everybody?
It should give everybody time to have it on their utility deal recorder, give everybody notification. Uh, once again, we will, items that would not be accepted, that would be, uh, be brought forth to the citizens, no large construction, paint or chemicals of any kind, concrete, bricks, center blocks, things of that nature. We will set tires at a minimum of ten per household.
All right, we got a motion to accept the, uh, right here for the spring cleanup.
Have a move.
Have a second?
Second.
So council, we will all share our eye.
Eye.
Pose nay. All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have Panting Creek LLC. I will read to you a letter that was written to every one of the LLC managers. It says, "I am writing this letter on behalf of the Belle Haven Town Council and myself to extend an invitation to you to come to our next Belle Haven Town Council meeting on March sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, six p.m. This is an invitation for you to come and speak to the council and the entire town," it's on video here, "for up to thirty uninterrupted minutes regarding why Panting Creek LLC has not relinquished the hospital property to the Punggolbepa Center for the reopening of our hospital. We want to extend this opportunity for you to explain this to the town. We would like to follow your presentation with a question-answer session with town council members. If you will accept this invitation to speak, please confirm with our town clerk, Jimmy Budge, thanks in advance for your cooperation." Now, that letter sounds pretty polite to me. Now, if you are part of an organization that was dealing with an issue that affected fifteen or twenty thousand people, and the town wanted you to come out and present your opinion and your position, would you feel a responsibility to do so? Of course you would. These four people who aren't elected to anything have to do with our community are holding our hospital hostage, which has to stop. It is important for everybody to understand, the town is reaching out to these people, we have sent people to talk to them, some people say, "Well, why don't you just negotiate with them?" They lie, they lie, their lawyer lies, okay? And we're, we're trying to deal with these folks. They're difficult to deal with. If you were right in what you were doing, what would be the danger of standing at that podium and explaining it to me? There would be no danger in that, but if you were doing something wrong, would you want to come stand at that podium and explain to everybody what you were doing wrong? And that's simply what's going on here. These folks are starting to complain because of bringing their name up. Well, when you deprive fifteen, twenty thousand people of emergency room services in a hospital, don't be shocked if your name is brought up. And it will continue to be brought up, because these four people have to do the right thing. I cannot figure out how any sane person could think that it's okay to keep a hospital from a community that paid for said hospital. These four people do not own this hospital in a moral sense. That hospital was paid for by federal and tax, federal and state tax, and donations and grants. That's how that hospital was paid for. The hospital originally was paid for by schoolchildren in our community raising fifteen thousand dollars, and then a farmer, a local farmer matching that fifteen thousand dollars so that we could build the hospital. Now, those four people are not involved in that. That was a long time ago, but it shows you about the community. In every addition to that hospital, every piece of equipment was bought due to grants, loans, and any loans were paid back, donations and that sort of thing. These four people have no more money in this hospital than some guy that's sitting on the beach in Santa Monica, California. Why they gave that facility back to the community? They are holding that community and holding that deed from our town, which is ready to open a hospital, not only for our own citizens, but now also for veterans, and our veterans need these services. Today, we had a press conference at one-thirty with about thirty veterans there that are tired of going to Durham to get services. They can get service right here in Belle Haven, but these four people are out here playing games, trying to keep the hospital away from its town. What does it cost then to deed this property to the town? Nothing. If they sell the property, they're not supposed to personally gain, because they're supposed to be a nonprofit. So there is no reason not to give that deed to the people who paid for that building. There's not a single reason other than emotional, emotional grudges or whatever their mental issue is, because the facts don't support what they're doing. So it's time for those four people to join in with the town, let's get, let's get, get working together and get this hospital up and going. And once again, if you won't show up at these meetings, that tells everybody the story. There's nobody standing there. Why would they be afraid of me? All I'm gonna do is talk about the facts, but if you're dealing in lies, you don't wanna come deal with somebody talking facts. It's painful. So Panting Creek LLC, I hope everyone in this area is praying for them to do the right thing. You know, some people said, "Well, you know, um, one of these particular four was, was big on prayer." What do you think Jesus would do? What would Jesus do? Would Jesus give the hospital to the town, or would Jesus keep the deed to the hospital and not let the town open a hospital? What would Jesus do? That's what everybody says, what would Jesus do? Now what would the devil do? So we need to be thinking about what we're doing to get past whatever mental issues are going on here. Next, so I'm gonna move on. Next up, we've got the Belle Haven Chamber of Commerce. Let me tell you a little bit about these folks. Is anybody here from the Belle Haven Chamber of Commerce? Let me tell you why they're not here. The Belle Haven Chamber of Commerce, I sent them a letter about the property. They are opportunists. The Belle Haven Chamber of Commerce, we have eminent domain letters sent to the property owners with the hospital, which is Marion Dilliday and Panting Creek LLC. Marion Dilliday then goes and, and gives the property to the Chamber of Commerce. So they take the property, which is hospital property, they take the property and now don't want to transfer that property to the, to the town for a hospital. What is the purpose of the Chamber of Commerce? Jobs, economic growth, isn't that what they're supposed to be about? Well, let me tell you something. Dr. Charles Boyett wanted to be here tonight, and why he wanted to be here tonight was he wanted to tell you something. About a month and a half ago, he sent a letter to the Chamber of Commerce asking them to rent Dr. Jones's old office, which is on that property, for a clinic. So he was gonna rent the building, fix the building up, and put his clinic in there for a short period of time, and pay them a nice rent. Do you know that they wouldn't respond to him? They never responded to him. That's your Belle Haven Chamber of Commerce. I think Belle Haven Chamber of Commerce needs to come off and say some words Chamber of Commerce, some special interest Chamber of Commerce. Belle Haven, they don't need to use Belle Haven's name in their, their name anymore. The other thing they've done is they now have decided to change the amount of directors they have to a smaller number. Now, once again, this was out talking in, in the town or getting out publicly doing this. They lowered the number of directors they have, and now they have a vetting system where they decide if they want you to even be able to run for a position on the board, so they can keep their buddies on the board. Disenfranchising people that live there. So they've lost their way, they've lost their mission, and they sent me a letter to inform me that they would not be transferring that property to the town. Now, if you know where that property is, it's the parking lot to the emergency room. And what we end up having to do is do eminent domain, but eminent domain takes a year. So they're gonna hold up the town for tens of thousands of dollars, they're gonna hold up the town instead of giving that to the town and working with the town. They have, there's been meetings where I have been told that members of the chamber, or the executive director have said that, uh, if, that they're not gonna be involved if it benefits the town. That's your Chamber of Commerce. Where are they tonight? I asked them to come explain about the property. They're not here. Why are they not here? Because all of you understand they should be working with the hospital. Do you know they've been political and not helped with the hospital? What would've been a better cause for the Chamber of Commerce than helping with the hospital, the biggest employer in town? With the VA situation now, there may be over a hundred people working at the hospital here. What will a hundred people do to Belle Haven? What will thirty veterans in beds over there and their families come to town do for Belle Haven? But instead, the Chamber of Commerce is trying to undermine, or trying to profit off of this situation. That's why they're not here tonight. We have a group of people in town that are anti-Belle Haven, anti-Belle Haven government, and are trying to cause all the problem they can cause. That's what they're doing. I want to read something to you. This is a letter right here. Okay, I want to give you an insight into what it's like being mayor of Belle Haven, or working with Belle Haven. This letter is by, uh, Woody Jarvis, sent to Walton, Ellen Allen. Now, what happened here, and what do you correct me if I'm wrong? What happened was last meeting, Ms. Allen wanted to talk over me during a meeting. You can see it online, it's out there. I was talking, the truth was hurt her so bad she started squealing, so I told her she would hush, would not talk over me. She kept, "I won't talk," so I threw her out of the meeting. They say, "Oh, Adam just threw you out of the meeting." I've never thrown anybody out of a town meeting that didn't cuss in here or didn't try to overtalk the council or myself during a town meeting. That's just the way it is. But here's the letter. "I'm writing you this letter in response to several issues of late. The two of you," these two right here, front row, with the camera, trying to harass us with a camera. "The two of you followed me home from Belle Haven Town Council meeting, February twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. You drove your car up into my yard and threatened me." So after the last town meeting, these two people right here went over the river and sat in waiting for our town manager to drive by going to his house. Then they followed him to his house and followed him into his driveway. And then they threatened him. "I work for the town of Belle Haven," the letter says. "Consequently, consequently, I attempt to perform the duties of town manager to the best of my ability. You said you warned me not to work for Belle Haven, and to remember you warned me if I got hurt in your future destruction of Mayor Adam O'Neill. Ellen, you also called me alive, creating a scene in the snack bar another time during lunch one day before a mayoral council election this past fall. Both of you regularly stalk and threaten other town employees who are also just trying to do their jobs. This is unnecessary and unwelcome nuisance. For your information, I don't make the rules of many of the decisions that govern Belle Haven activities. The town employees do not set town policy either. We all follow policy as set forth by the town council. I do not appreciate your threats and intimidation. I have an office inside of this building. If you have concerns related to town business, see me at the office if you wish to discuss anything work-related with me or my employees. Do not, under any circumstances, come to any of my property ever again." Belle Haven, Belle Haven has unlimited potential to be a wonderful place to work and live. If you tried as hard to help as you tried to intimidate and bully, we would all be better off. I am willing to work with you both, but your current behavior towards me and other town employees is totally unsaid. Failure in a part to heed my request will result in strong actions." We had to call the DA to find out what to do about this, because they're threatening all the time. They're threatening the destruction of Mayor Adam O'Neill, okay? That's what I deal with. And then they bring their camera, they set up front, try to look all bully and intimidating. I'm not intimidated or bullied, not bullied, I'm doing what I think. We've had every state agency they can think of come to Belle Haven. We just had the state regulations come in because we cut grass in the black part of town. I got a problem with that. If I'm cutting grass in white part of town, everything's fine. Let me cut some grass in the black part of town. These folks want to get riled up. We're gonna treat everybody the same, and when you treat people the same, those who think they're privileged get mad and bring their cameras out as such. But we will not be intimidated, and we will do what's best for Belle Haven, and you got the wrong cat to deal with, ain't going nowhere. So anyway, that's all filed. The next time they do something to DA, we will call the Sheriff's Department and have them dealt with it. Next up, I've got a hospital resolution here on the river pole. Before I bring it forward, on a lighter note, Mr. Mike Hall, will you come forward, please? I'll introduce you, Mike. Hey, Mike. Mike was here earlier for our press conference at one-third. Mike is a warrant officer in the Army who was a helicopter pilot, a medicate helicopter pilot in Iraq and Afghanistan. He's a Bronze Star Award winner, which you can probably embarrass that you can tell, but we're proud of your service. He flew a hundred fifty-five combat missions in the two countries and saved a lot of people. We have been fortunate. Back after the second walk to DC last July, I got a phone call, and that phone call was, "Mayor, we're impressed with what you're doing. We think Belle Haven's awesome, waiting for a fight." We think Bell Haven is awesome, waiting for all the fighting, and we want to help you." What's going on? When are you going to get your hospital back? So I told him, "Well, call me back in a couple of months, let me see where I am." So then we had Vitae vessel the certificate of deed, which made us have to walk the road and deal with all that. Then we go file the eminent domain, and it looks like it could take up to a year now when attorney itself can do a quick take. Attorney was wrong. So that can take up to a year to do eminent domain. So finally, I had another talk with Rodney, another fellow with the same company, and they wanted to come see us in January. So when they came to see us in January to a hospital board meeting, they laid out what their plans are. And we've been kind of tight-lipped with it until the last week because just as soon as we put it out there, Vitae and people in here that don't want the town to do well will start trying to undermine whatever. Well, we have a situation where these veterans, who have done projects all over the country, are going to put together a company called Strategic Healthcare LLC. They've already got their name, they're ready to put it in force just as soon as we get the hospital back. They have already contracted with a company called People's Choice Hospitals out of Illinois to run the VA part of the hospital. And Mike is going to be the veteran's advocate at the hospital. So what we'll have is a situation where before, we had a business plan based on an emergency room and ten rooms for local use, and we had a business plan with the ACO to show that could break even and do well. Then we had all those beds that we had to do something else with. And we kicked around rehab, mental health, and the managers frontier have been putting together a business plan for that part. Well, when Mike's associates came to us, they said, "How many beds can we have?" And what they're willing to do is sign a letter of intent to lease thirty beds. They will lease thirty beds from us once we get the hospital property back. Within thirty days, they'll be putting people in those beds. They already have an arrangement with a relationship with VA. They aren't VA, it's a private contractor that works with VA patients. But they already have their choice contract in place, and once we open up within ninety to one hundred days, they'll have what's called a tri-care contract, which means they basically take care of any veteran. This is an extremely big deal. These are revenues that we were not counting on, that now all of a sudden we have a big organization that wants to throw a lot of money at our hospital. Mike, if you would fill in the gaps or say a few words about what you all are doing and what your intention is.
Okay, thanks, Senator. I saw most of you today, I think, at the meeting earlier today. Our intention is to come in, try to provide a service and a need where it's been lacking. And I think everybody here can appreciate the fact that the veterans are probably not treated as well as they probably should be. We won't blame the VA for that because they did good things for the rest of the veterans. We're not trying to take away from them, we're trying to augment and help the system. We want to bring these guys into the town along with the jobs that are involved with that, and we want to provide some services that are likely needed. There's a lot of them need ventilation therapy, as we're all well familiar. A lot of them have PTSD, post-traumatic stress, severe injuries, if you're familiar. And they need that counseling and help, which also turns to drugs, turns to drug use, alcoholism, and all these other things that come along with it. We intend, we plan on treating this as well, and we believe that that location is perfect for them because of the waterfront, the access to the waterfront, and the ability for these guys to be able to kind of walk outside, beyond the ocean, and just that calm and peace that everyone here enjoys on a daily basis because we live in such a beautiful place here. You guys live in such a beautiful place. So we would also like to invite the community to come up with any type of volunteer programs they like to help with the veterans and be a part of that on the waterfront of the hospital. We're going to try to clean up the dock, set up the dock, maybe put a few berths in there for boats, set up fishing trips and these kind of things that the community can do along with the veterans. There's probably nothing more means more to a veteran that doesn't have anybody that somebody comes out and says, hey, let's go fishing. So you can only imagine the kind of therapy that brings to a soul that has that. And if you were here today and you heard the voice of guys that have been needing this help for a whole time, and we're trying to bring that long-needed help to veterans in this area. And we're also willing to transport anyone within a hundred fifty miles of this that needs that care as well to service in addition to the hospital that we provide that also brings more veterans into the area and gives a chance for them to see you. Maybe they decide that this is not such a bad place to be and they want to go there. So it turns, you know, kind of helps to help the community. So with the opportunity to do this, we'd like to build a strong relationship with the town because we really are on board with what the mayor is doing here, and we support his causes. So given the chance, we will take care of those veterans and give them the voice of that.
Any council members have any questions? I think it's important to understand that the LLC, once again, is being formed. They've got their name and all, they're ready to put it in action just as soon as we get the building back. Just like the USDA, like we have to have the building back. Just like the ACO, we've got to have the building back. Just like the VA, we've got to have the building back. And we've got four people keeping us from getting the building back. This community should be getting pretty upset because not only is it healthcare, it's economics. How are the businesses downtown going to do with thirty veterans over there and their families coming to see them? It's a big deal. So we need to work very hard. We need to work very hard to make these things work. And then the People's Choice Hospitals out of Illinois, who specialize and work with small hospitals, will be the managers of the veteran's side of the hospital. There has to be like a firewall between the two entities. But the veterans will be able to use our lab, which will help the hospital if they have emergencies, they'll be able to use the emergency room right there. It's a big event, it's something that makes the hospital be fantastic, and the quicker these four people move aside, the quicker we have some wonderful things taking place. But Mike, thank you for coming and thank you for serving.
Thanks, Senator.
All right, very well, look, we have a resolution here. Here's, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the Bell Haven Hospital property is of tremendous value to the citizens of Bell Haven and surrounding area, and whereas our citizens are suffering from lack of emergency care and hospital services, and whereas there have been several deaths as a direct result of no emergency room access within a reasonable distance, and whereas the town has worked tirelessly to save our hospital, and whereas the economic effects of the hospital closure has caused the loss of our largest employer, and whereas the town businesses are suffering from reduction in the number of people coming to town for healthcare, and whereas the town has no liability for the loan acquired by Punga Medical Center to reopen the hospital, and whereas the business plan to retain ten to fifteen beds for local use, establish an emergency room, and lease thirty beds of extra services is viable, and whereas the community by and large are demanding to reopen our hospital, and whereas it was Dr. Charles Boyett's last wish that the hospital property be returned to the people. Therefore, be resolved that the town council of Bell Haven requests Pantit Creek LLC to immediately return the hospital property to the community-organized nonprofit, Punga Medical Center. This is a moral and ethical action due to the hospital being a community facility in the truest form. The deed transfer will allow our hospital to once again be open and able to serve our local citizens and veterans from around the country. The action will fulfill Dr. Charles Boyett's training for Bell Haven. Do it for Dr. Do we have any discussion of this resolution?
Yeah, it's a beautiful resolution. I agree with, but you saying these four people holding it, won't return it, and they did you? I know you said your action would come to me today, and I, you get no response at all?
No response. There's just said it work coming. No, it won't.
Well, I would like to ask a question to the audience. Are y'all going to pay for the hospital?
Yeah.
That's the reason why I'm here. And do y'all have any idea why they're holding it, won't return it? I understood before I started running for the department, they said it wouldn't work. The town got to pay for it. If it don't work, it'll cause the town to go broke. So listening to the mayor and investigating a little bit, the town, if they get the land back, they have the land. So that's why you're holding the hospital, so that you won't open it, you're holding the land so that you can't?
These four people are holding the land so that we will not reopen the hospital. There is no liability to the town whatsoever. That's why Punga Medical Center was set up, is to take liability away from the town. The town is not liable for it for the money. I have said that until I blew it to face. I have sent a letter out, it's been on Facebook everywhere. To some people, when it's daylight, they'll tell you it's dark, instinctively keep telling you it's dark no matter how bright the sun gets. And that's what these people are doing. They're holding a position that is indefensible.
Mr. Mayor, having been sworn in to fill out the term of Councilman Dr. Charles Boyett, I'd like to make the motion that we accept this resolution in his honor. And I'll make that as a motion.
I second it. Same, Councilman Wilson. All fair, aye?
Aye.
Okay, next up, town manager of the board.
I'll make it short. We have a vacancy in our public works department for approved person. If anybody has anybody here in town that's interested, we're taking applications. We want to make this a very public process, we want to get the best help we can hire for the town. Any questions, contact us, we'll get you an application. Wanted to mention briefly that Councilman Wilson and I attended Essential to Government class in Greenville, put on by the School of Government from UNC, March fourth of May. There was ethics training, there was interaction with other municipalities, and a lot of comparisons in the business of running a town, what we're going through versus other towns. It was a very good course. If there's anybody with any concerns coming up with the future cleanup in April, if there's anything we can do to help, let us know. One other item that's pretty interesting without going into great details, the collections on the utilities are coming in. We are a fraction of what we were four months ago. That picture is improving daily. So I thank everybody for supporting us in this.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, that seminar that Woody and Councilman Wilson went to, netted requirements for all of those of the churches.
Well, ethics are, I'll take them anytime you're available. You probably take it again.
You can do the ethics online.
You can call online. Go and find out what we do.
I would like to say that meeting that we went to was very, very, very informative, very exciting, relieving. We met people from all the parts of the county, all across the state and all throughout the land. And I'm telling you, it was very, very, I enjoyed it. They gave us agenda, if I know what we're talking about, I brought it. They probably have some more classes coming up, and I would like to go into those classes because they're very informative.
You'll find out. You any things?
No, I, our town, our town is not the baddest town because talking to a lot of people, they have problems, essentially we have problems. I'm serious, I thought we were the only one that had problems.
Well, Councilman Wilson, I can tell you that as clean the town as there is in North Carolina now, was every state agency that they can call in. Amen. You know, you know, lucky to serve for the people. I still can't figure out, people get so upset about people trying to save a hospital, to save our economic future, and save our children's lives. I still blows my mind that we have people trying to stop from saving the hospital that's going to flourish. It blows my mind. And in time, we'll have a situation where the hospital will be back open, and those people will come around as well because they'll need the hospital too. And when they need it, nobody's going to say a word, we're just going to treat them and be glad that they've survived. Lastly, lastly, I want to talk about Dr. Boyett quickly. Dr. Boyett and I, of course, were bitter political enemies for eight years probably, and we ran against him three times, and there were some pretty rough elections that took place. But Dr. Boyett and I got together on this hospital issue. And when we took some of the folks out of the Cause and Division, and the two of us got to know each other, we found out we were pretty compatible folks. I can remember riding to, rallying with them on two different occasions, just Dr. and getting to talk to him and getting to hear his wisdom and his stories about wrestling in Carolina and about different things that he's been involved in. Dr. Boyett, it got to be Dr. Boyett would tell me, "Be careful, take care of yourself. Need to lose some weight. Why eating pizza? Don't order pizza." So it got to be, we had a pretty, pretty good relationship. And the loss of him is shocking, and all of us, I know we're still trying to just believe that it's true. But Dr. Boyett left a great legacy here in town, and his last wish was to open this hospital up, and those four people need to understand there is no way on planet Earth that we're not going to open that hospital back up. So it would be the best thing for the entire community to work with the community to get that deed back, and let's open that hospital in Dr. Boyett's honor, and let's get moving. Let's do it. All right, meet you there.